Thank you all. I'll call this meeting, this Monday night meeting of the Fort Mill Town Council to order, please. If you have a device and anything, phone, iPad, carrier pigeon, anything that might interrupt by chirping and you might forget to turn it off, please silence it so that we can hear you and you can hear us. So I appreciate you doing that. Council will stand for a pledge of allegiance and then Town Council Member Lisa Cook will provide an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Dear Father, thank you for bringing us together today. Thank you for the amazing weather that we have out, the fall like colors that we see every day and beginning to show within our town. Dear Lord, please be with those that are hurting today, those that are continuing to struggle from the storms that we've had, those are struggling from breast cancer as we start looking at Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and those that have triumphed through this horrible disease. Dear Lord, please be with us to make the best decisions for our town and to lead our lives in accordance to your will. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Good job. So, we have a full house this evening and I thank each and every one of you for sharing space and, you know, it's not a bad thing to be close, is it? So, thank you. We will do our best to be expedient, but would like to take a couple of minutes to follow on the prayer. So many people were harmed by the storm since our last meeting and there are people that were already living on the edge. And I would like to specifically say thank you to members of our community, of our staff, and of our council for the work that you've done and the outreach that you've given to help. We have folks that I read had problems with poison ivy. We've had communications issues to be resolved. We've given of our time, our talent, and what we had to give, our fire department, our police department. Not only, you know, did our town staff take care of our town, because we had trees down, some pretty large ones, but we still reached out. So, I thank everyone for the heart that this community has, because I've seen it and it's incredible. So, thank you all for reaching out and helping those that are in very troubling times. Their need will not go away quickly. I think it will take quite some time before any sort of normalcy. I did see it's going to be 26 up there tomorrow night. So, please, if you have it in your heart to do so, continue to give and continue to keep those people in your thoughts and prayers. So, thank you so much. Council members, you have received the minutes for September 23rd council meeting and the October 3rd special call meeting. Are there any changes, deletions, or additions?
There are none. I move to accept a minutes as read.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, thank you so much. Public comments. Pursuant to section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. Citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. Chris, do we have anyone signed in?
We do not.
Alrighty then. We're going to start this evening with a presentation in recognition of the River Trail Elementary School Scarecrow Award winners. Jocana, Chris, several of us were honored to go over and judge an incredible project by this elementary school. Each of the children, they were so creative and so mindful and the thoughts and effort that they put into their projects was just astounding. So, with that, would you like to come up and do some introductions? And it's just amazing what these young people were able to do. So, we're very proud of them.
Yes, I am too. So, I'm Ms. Shamblyn. I am a native Fort Mill. I grew up here, went through all the school system. And so, Fort Mill was very special to me. So, I knew immediately I wanted to teach in Fort Mill. And this is my 17th year teaching. And I am very proud of these students. So, each year, the Scarecrow Crawl, as you know, is like such a great event. And I just felt like it was such a neat opportunity to bring it into the classroom so that when students left school, they could also apply it to the real world. Because sometimes they leave school and they're like, their parents like, "What'd you learn today?" And they're like, "I don't know," but they did. So, I'm just going to let them talk to you about the project, because I feel like hearing it from them would be best. So, first up is Amira. Okay, so here's Amira. Make your project. And I'll hold up their project so you guys can kind of see what they go and they're talking about it.
We're so excited to have you here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Savage. Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Amira Shinivasan, and I'd like to share my experience during this year's scarecrow project. Our fourth grade teacher, Mrs. Shamblyn, had assigned us six word problems to solve before we could start building our scarecrows. To solve these word problems, I had to use the math concepts thought to us by Mrs. Shamblyn, which includes addition, subtraction, estimation, and creating an equation with the variable, which means solving for the unknown. For some questions, I had to combine a few math concepts like addition and subtraction to solve the problem. We called these multi-step word problems. This certainly helped me during my scarecrow creation. I had to measure the height of my base and the height of my otters. Once done, I added the two measurements together and ensured that the total height was less than one foot. Some challenges I faced during this project was adding and subtracting large numbers. But I managed to solve them correctly by using the math concept of estimation and checking the equation with the variable, by using the opposite operation, too. Another challenge was the multi-step question, which required me to solve part of the problem with addition and the other part with subtraction. I wrote an equation with the variable to ensure that I worked on the word problem step by step to reach the final answer. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Savage for inviting us to this meeting to share our scarecrow project, and my teacher, Mrs. Shamblyn, for making math so fun to learn. Do you have any questions about part one of our project?
Great job. Yeah. You have so much poise and it was an incredible, incredible gift you have. So, each of you. So, we're grateful for it. I would like for you to bring your project by.
Yes, please.
Exactly. Can we see it?
So, we have two, three more that are going to kind of give you a piece of the project. Then we can definitely, do you want to hurry?
Go ahead and bring it by.
It's up to you. It's whatever works best for you.
Now, I'm going to introduce Kareem to talk about part two of the project.
Hello, I hope this evening finds you well. My name is Kareem Elzini, and I will be talking to you about the restrictions. For our scarecrow math project, my classmates and I had the exciting opportunity to create mini scarecrows inspired by those in downtown Fort Mill during the annual scarecrow crawl. We brought the spirit of this scarecrow crawl into our classroom by designing our own unique scarecrows. Each scarecrow had to reflect one of the three models we follow at River Trail Elementary: work hard, take care of each otter, or thrive and impact the world. Choosing our theme was hard, but led to some really creative designs. Once we selected our theme, we entered the design process, an important step in any engineering project. We began by sketching our ideas and thinking of the materials we would need for our build. This involved making drawings and listing supplies, which could include items we brought from home or materials provided by Ms. Shamblyn, such as popsicle sticks, cotton balls, foam balls, toothpicks, and cardboard. After receiving Ms. Shamblyn's approval on our designs, we began the construction phase. Similar to the town's restrictions, we had to follow a height requirement of 12 inches. This means our scarecrows had to stand independently without support. As we built our scarecrows, we quickly realized that our initial sketches were not as perfect as we thought. This happens a lot when people engineer or design things. We adjusted our designs and continuously improved our creation. Throughout this project, collaboration was key. We supported our classmates who faced difficulties. This allowed us to show teamwork and perseverance. This project allowed us to see firsthand how math plays an important role in real-world situations, like making the scarecrow in downtown. We loved having this experience in Ms. Shamblyn's classroom. Do you guys have any questions?
How long have you guys had to work on this project? I'm curious, when did you start?
So, this is our GT class. I teach GT. So, we were about two weeks ahead with the curriculum. So, they had a week and a half to work on the actual, like, academic part, which was the math. And then, once I approved that, they received a week to engineer and design, like, their very own. And so, all of these things, they came up with on their own within a week and a half, before we had the town guests come and vote. So, yeah.
Amazing.
August will now talk to you about the next steps. Thank you for your time.
Hello, I am August Long, and I will tell you about the voting process of our scarecrow. First, I want to thank the Fort Mill Town Council for having us present our projects to you this evening. All of us had to have at least one problem to solve with both math and building. But if you had a good plan or sketch, you would have a decent finished project for your scarecrow. I personally struggle with the scarecrow standing straight, but I persevered by learning that hot glue can patch cardboard in one second. The voting process was not too complex. Mayor Savage, Ms. Hester, Mr. Sardelli, Ms. Griffin, Ms. Kelly, and all of our school board members and representatives from the district office came into River Trail. They walked around the classroom and gave stickers to their favorite scarecrows for each of these four categories. The categories were best name, best overall, most complex, and most creative. Then, they put the scarecrows in the library and counted to see who had the most stickers in each category. The winners were announced in class and were given certificates. Also, the winning scarecrow for best overall are currently displayed in downtown with their very own River Trail Elementary scarecrow. We all learned a lot from this project. We learned a little bit about math and a little bit about engineering. Overall, this project was the most project, was the most fun project that we've had so far this year. Thank you again for having us. If not, do you have any questions?
Did you enjoy it? Did you have fun doing it?
Yeah.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Incredible.
Do you live in White Grove?
Uh huh.
You do?
I think, I thought I was seeing you around.
Oh, that's amazing.
Now, I will introduce you to Vanya, our winner.
Chris Sardelli, would you turn that microphone down so that we might capture a little better? Thank you.
Thank you, August, for sharing. Hello, Mayor Savage and all of the other Fort Mill representatives. I am Vanya Nacher, the winner of the 2024 scarecrow project. My design at first was a two-layered building, but then I found out it was above 12 inches, which was above the limited height. Then, my friend suggested that I should make it a real event. My event is about a teacher working hard to teach her students. Then, the students are working hard by listening to their teacher. Beth is working hard and taking care of the world by demonstrating how to recycle. My design started out a layer in background of cardboard. Then, I made the teacher, Ms. Otter, inspired by my third grade teacher, Ms. Shepherd. Then, I made two students sitting, inspired by my third grade classmates. Then, after that, I got the idea of Beth. As you can see, Beth is the class demonstrator because she is demonstrating how to recycle to other students who do not know how to recycle. Does anyone have any questions about the 2024 scarecrow project?
Can you come teach my husband how to recycle? Before you all come up, I think it's important to note that the mascot of their school is an otter. And as we, all of us, went to judge this contest, we found such a wonderful use of taking care of each otter. It was applied in many of their projects. And it's incredible to see the future that these young folks have in engineering, in project management, in design, in speaking. I am so, so impressed with each and every one of you. And all the projects were great. They were. But I think we would, would you all like to come down and see them real quick?
Yeah.
What was the hardest material to use in your project?
Two question.
Probably, I think it was hard enough to cut the cardboard.
We didn't have the...
What should have been the... You have elbow injuries, right?
Plastic spine.
No hot glue gun burns or anything like that?
No, we had a hot glue gun.
No burns.
It was really hard to shape the Play-Doh.
Yes.
It's like, I don't know, it was perfect size, it was too big, too small. And the hot glue, it gets too much sometimes, so it's hard to cover it up.
Looks better than my fourth grade project.
While we're closing, who's your favorite teacher? Oh, I know. I know.
Good? Can you get everyone?
I think so. Yes. Alright, everyone. Smile. Perfect.
Awesome. Thank you. Great job. Well, we're getting, so my daughters and son are in the process of applying for college. And, you know, STEM projects are a big thing. This is amazing. And it's something to remember because the values that they're learning are so valuable. And, teacher, thank you for coming back. You're barely 17 years old. I don't see how you've got 17 years of experience. But phenomenal job. I should have been a teacher, so I look that young. I know, exactly. Alright. Thank you all for your attention. These are projects that are critically important to all our futures. And I'm just so proud that the town was able to participate in any small way with this. So, thank you, Jocana. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, thank you, Fire Department. Thank you. Everybody was so great. Thank you. We're going to alter our schedule just slightly. We're going to now hear from David Boust and Phil Leiser about the Pennies for Project, equally important to the lives of those that live in Fort Mill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Savage, and thank you, Town Council. We really appreciate being with you today to talk a little bit about Pennies for Progress. I have the astute pleasure here to introduce Phil here in a second, who is a Pennies for Progress legend. He was part of the Pennies for Progress 1, 2, and 3, which the folks behind the counter here, they all know what Pennies has done for our community. I really appreciate the opportunity to come talk to you about it, because we do have a new renewal coming here for Pennies 5. And it's incredibly important program for our area. So, with that, I'm going to let Phil start. We're going to tag team this presentation, and we're going to keep it really quick. Thanks.
Thank you. We appreciate you.
Mayor Savage, members of County Town Council, thank you so much. For those of you who know me, I'm back. For those who you don't, as David said, I was associated with the sales tax program for the first 21 years that it was existing, retired from the county and now worked out in the private sector, and was asked to come out and try to promote a little bit about what the Pennies program can do. For most of you, you know. For some of you, you're new to the area, which, as we all know, we're all growing at leaps and bounds. So, there's quite a few people here, I'm sure, who don't know about the program. Real quick, I do have, I know we're in a rush here, but I do have to say, I cannot believe y'all are asking me to follow that group.
That's why she stuck you in there, because Jocana didn't want to follow that.
I can see why. And secondly, I do want to talk to the teacher, because I think I have four young adults that I want to get back over to engineering and talk to them a little bit. So, very good, very good program. Just real quick, I'm going to run through these fairly quickly. If you have any questions, please stop me. The Pennies for Progress program, know that the four qualities of that program, the four goals of that program have been the same since the beginning. They're listed there in front of you. I want to emphasize, what we're talking about today is being able to continue that sales tax. I'm not going to go into a whole lot of history, but the fact is, state lawmakers made it where you must, you must have a sunset in this sales tax program. And if you decide you want to go forward with it again, you want to keep it going, you have to have another referendum. That's what we're doing. This is not a new tax, ladies and gentlemen. This is the existing tax that's in place now, that is doing some wonderful things for our road system. It's just a continuation of that tax. I'm going to let you jump in before the projects.
So, here's where we were when we started. We had four humble projects. Wow, has Pennies grown from there. For those of this area, 160 was a two-lane road. I can go on and on, but I, we've all, I-77 was four lanes total. That's what Pennies has done for us. Look at the map now. The dots are your intersections and the colors, and I know it's hard to see, but we're going to have a QR code at the end. So, if you want to know details, hit that QR code with your phone. All of this is online. I'm really excited about this Pennies project. Not only are we hitting roads, we're also hitting intersections to make them safer. And there's some in our district here. We've also got some very important roads that Fort Mill is part of Pennies 5 that are critical to our area. And so, I think that this is a really important project for our town in particular, your county in general, but Fort Mill in particular. You want to jump back in?
What Pennies 5 is introducing, and as you all know, we've had some events, some world-changing events that have happened. What we refer to in the private sector is a black swan event. It's something you just cannot predict when COVID came along. With that, there was a shortfall from the previous program. Now, I want to emphasize very quickly, that shortfall only came to fruition after COVID hit. Before COVID hit, every project that had been completed was completed under budget and within schedule. After the COVID hit, we ended up with several projects that were over budget. The commission has decided to make good on those commitments that were already made, that the voters had already voted on, and have set aside 225 million of the new initiative to be able to cover all those. That is important. Fort Mill, it's important for you because US-21, part of that section, of that three-legged section, gets completed because of this. Other projects in the area get completed because of that refunding of the additional projects. There's 80 million dollars for about 76 miles of roadway resurfacing. A good number of those are in Fort Mill. And I think I attended your meeting when the Sales Tax Commission came. And I think two of the three that you put together as your top priority got added to that list along with some other projects. $44.9 million is for the five-laning of US-21 from 160 to Sutton Road. This is that three-segment project I was telling you about that basically takes you from the Catawba River all the way through the Fort Mill township to I-77. We all know, something happens on I-77, 21 becomes just about the only viable option, and it clogs up quickly. When this program is completed with these projects, you will have a multi-lane corridor adjacent or parallel to I-77 that you can use when you do have those issues. And hopefully, will take a little bit of the burden off of I-77 so we don't see quite as much congestion. Next is $9 million for design and right-of-way of the future widening of Fort Mill Parkway. This is basically from Biggers Brothers, US Foods, all the way to Holbrook Road, the most busy section of the Fort Mill Southern Bypass at this point. We knew it was going to happen. The county at the time, whoever that was, very smart people. The county at the time decided to buy five lanes of right-of-way. So, basically, you've got just about all the right-of-way purchased. There'll be some small intersections that have to be, have some additional right-of-way. Moving on very quickly, $12.8 million for Neely Road improvements, and then $38 million for various intersection projects, including several intersections inside town of Fort Mill. This is just a real quick snapshot of Pennies 5. The reds are resurfacing, the greens are the new widening projects, and then the blue dots are the intersection projects. As you can see, touching every portion of the county. Countywide intersection improvements, Dam Road and Gardendale is the one that I can think of this area. There's potential that we could see a roundabout there with the development that's going on in that area. Five-laning, I just talked about, 21 from 160 to Sutton Road, five-laning of the Parkway, Neely Road, and Wy Street. Those are the four real large widening or corridor improvement projects that were added. I won't bore you with the Rock Hill Roads, but I will bore you with Fort Mill TK Roads, the resurfacing of these roads. Again, I know that two of those on there were your higher priorities that came out when, during your public meeting. Several other roads are going to be resurfaced. I'll say very quickly, this resurfacing does not take away from the gas tax money that comes from the SCDOT. They are still working on their projects. They are still working on the roads. These are roads that were 10, 12, 15 years away from getting that funding. They got escalated up to here to, elevated up to here so they could get done quicker. There are several projects throughout Clover and Lake Wiley, York and Western York County. There is a video on the website. You'll be able to do a QR code in just a minute if you want. Plus, it's, we'll provide you the website itself. It's a video. I'm not going to bore you with it right now. It just kind of gives you the history of what the Pennies program is. Please take an opportunity, if you don't know already, to watch that. It gives you a little bit of the history. What we're really here today to talk about is to say, this is a great program. We want you to get behind it and support it. I would like to tell you to vote yes. But I'm here to tell you that the program is out there, the program is good. It is not a sales tax increase. It is not a tax increase. It's a continuation of the existing. And there are so many good things that it has accomplished over the years. I hope that you all take a very good, hard look at that and show up at the polls to vote, however you want to vote. Last thing I'll tell you is that Pennies for Progress was something that was born here in York County. We were the very first county in the state of South Carolina to do this program. Pennies for Progress was a catchphrase. As we were all sitting around a round table, somebody threw out, and we kept, we caught on to it. Pennies for Progress is a statement, statement throughout the state. However, on the ballot itself, it will not say Pennies for Progress. It will say York County Capital Projects Sales Use Tax. That's important. That's the question. It's only asking you, do you want to continue this tax or not continue this tax? Yes, I want to continue. No, I don't. Any other questions, real quick? And I apologize, David, I dropped it back off to you.
Yeah. Well, and I just wanted to mention that we've had some really good polling numbers. And the largest concern for the voters of York County is roads. The second is infrastructure. Ladies and gentlemen, the drivers are already here, the traffic is already here. We need to fulfill this promise to the people here and put these roads on the ground and make them safe. I'd also say that the way this is structured, we studied where the money comes in from, over a quarter of the revenue actually comes from people that don't live here. They're visiting here, they're enjoying our services, they're eating in our restaurants, and they're paying for our roads. So, if we don't get this to pass, it's up to us to fund it ourselves. So, I just wanted to really say thank you for your time today. Thank you for your attention. And when you have the opportunity, please vote yes.
We have a really long meeting, but I know this is so important to all of us. I think it's important, as we are on video tonight, and I think everyone should understand, the safety of widening 21 became a crucial item for us when there was an accident on 77, what, a year ago, year and a half ago? And we would have had a hard time getting emergency vehicles to any type of event in the town because we were locked down. We were absolutely locked down. And that is not, that can't happen. So, whereas Pennies doesn't cause growth, we are a pass-through for a lot of traffic on either side of us. Much larger cities and communities are coming through Fort Mill to gain access to 77. That's not our fault. And I do keep harping on this. Ben will back me up on that. But I do think, for me, mobility's important to us all. And Pennies has given us things we wouldn't have gotten. So, I propose nickels for new, dimes for driving, or quarters for quality. You know, I think it's important that we protect the health and safety of those in Fort Mill by ensuring that we can get to them if they have a problem. So, with that, I thank you for your efforts. And council, would you like to make any comments?
I would just follow up on that. As a lifelong Fort Millian, I've seen the differences made. And people complain about the traffic, but I can imagine what it would be like if it wasn't for Pennies 1, 2, and 3, and 4. And you look and see what disaster North Carolina's facing with the interstate, which is making one bad decision after another, which I'm thinking is, I think is before them tonight. So, we're very fortunate that our forefathers saw this, and I think we've all benefited greatly from it. So, thank you for your involvement and pushing. I think it's a great program. Hopefully, we get many more years out of that.
QR codes up on the screen. Please feel free to... Please feel free to, anything else you want to know, too.
Okay.
Just real quick, I was gonna ask, for those who may not know, that one cent, can you explain just briefly what that applies to? Is it across the board, or how that one cent works?
Thank you. Yes, it's a sales tax. So on anything you purchase, restaurant, food, hotels, clothing, any retail purchase, that sales tax is attributable to this. So it doesn't discriminate. If you're from North Carolina, you're from New York. You're paying this sales tax when you're here buying goods and services, and that's going directly into the coffers of York County to pay for this. Two things about that. One, York County didn't make this list. The people of York County made this list. Two, that money can only go to these projects. It cannot be re-appropriated for anything else. So this money is very safe for this purpose only, and that's all we're asking for.
Mr. Evans, I'll add to that. The state lawmakers did come back in. They heard input from people after the 1997 sales tax program was passed, or the law was passed, and they did exempt prescription drugs, groceries, and I believe there was one other item that they exempted from that. So it's not.
It's important, preventing conversation about taking it from literally one cent to two cents and basically doubling the impact.
Not this year, obviously. This thing has been in motion for almost two years now, get it to this point, for the voters to be ready to vote on. But I really think that that is something in the future, to answer your question, that needs to be studied.
All right. Awesome. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
I can't imagine what we would look like today if we hadn't had this over the many years. You know, I live off Dobbs Bridge Road, and I know our traffic in that area is challenging, to say the least, but it's also, half of the cars I see are North Carolina tags that are coming through from the Indian Land community and cutting through. As the mayor said, a lot of times, we're just the cut-through for a place somebody's trying to get to. But I also want to say some appreciation for changing the structure a couple of years ago when we went adding resurfacing projects, not just growth, not just new roads, but working on resurfacing, and particularly intersections. I think that's one of the things we've looked at recently, is are intersections safe with the way people travel today? And I appreciate that you guys are looking at those intersections all over the county to try to make it safer for modality, whether it's pedestrian traffic, bicycles, cars, whatever. So thank you for what you're doing. I appreciate you coming to speak tonight.
Absolutely.
It's been our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good? Thank you. We will be there for you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Great program.
Yes. We will now move to presentation number two, 2024 Fort Mill Fall Festival presentation. Jacana.
Good evening. I am here to present our Fall Festival is coming up this Saturday, October the 9th, at the Fort Mill Amphitheater at Walter Elijah Park, 345 North White Street. The event will be from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM. From 3:00 to 4:30, we have Rob Cole. He was actually a voice contestant, and he does country, but he also does a variety of other music as well. From 4:30 to 5:30 PM, we will have our costume contest for ages birth to adult, and we will be giving out best child for birth through 12-years-old, and then funniest, cutest, most creative, best overall for that age bracket, and then best teen, best adult, and then the funniest, cutest, most creative, and best overall for 13 to adult. And all of our winners will receive medals and prizes. And then from 5:30 to 7:00, we have 615 Collective. They do a variety of music, country, Americana, folk, and pop, and they are really good. Dean and I got to see them at one of our conferences we went to. And then we have our town departments. They have a touch-a-truck event going on. We have the fire department, police department, public works, parks and recreation, and utilities and stormwater. They will have a variety of equipment out there, as well as tents set up where you can get information about our different town departments. They will have fun activities and giveaways, and we are also doing a passport that they will take around to each town department tent and get that stamped. And when it's completed, they will turn that in at the police department for a chance to win a bicycle. They are raffling off some bicycles. So I'm very excited about all of that. And then you will be able to visit. We have about 45 vendors, businesses, nonprofits, that type of vendor, and you will be able to visit them for special games, treats, and giveaways. And we have 21 food, snack, and drink vendors. We have Hobos and Illumination Wine. They will be hosting the alcohol sales for this event, and you will go to the Fort Mill History Museum tent to get your ID check, wristbands, and ticket sales, and those are the prices for that. Then other fun stuff we have going on, DJ, our DJ is State Line Productions. We'll have Kids Crafts and Pumpkin Decorating, Wow Factor Science Show. We'll be doing two different shows at 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM. We have Madden Ranch, which is that fun stagecoach you see there, that you can hop on it, get your picture made, and then he will also teach you how to lasso. And we also have our public works department will be building our hay maze this week, and we'll have that going on through October the 17th through the 31st. And this is just an event site map. We'll have all of our food trucks on the right-hand side of the park, and then our vendors and all of our fun activities will be on the left side, and then the touch-a-truck will be along Audrey Street. And we'll be doing loading at the park from 12:30 PM to 2:00 PM. And then for our event rules, if you visit fortmillsc.gov/townevent, you can see all of our event rules. Just be sure to read over those. And then always just bring a chair or blanket so you can sit out there and enjoy all of our music and entertainment. It's gonna be beautiful, beautiful weather this weekend. And then parking is located at Veterans Park, 106 North White Street, Calhoun Street Park, 203 Calhoun Street, Looms Way, and then we have Handicapped behind the amphitheater and at 205 North White Street. And we ask that you do not park along any roadways, or you will be towed. And tonight, we're seeking a resolution designating Walter Elijah Park on Saturday, October the 19th from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM as the site of a public event in which alcoholic beverages may be sole possessed and consumed, and to authorize a special event permit for live music and sound amplifying equipment for this date and time, and all the details are in the resolution for that. And then, as always, follow Town of Fort Mill on social media and go to fortmillsc.gov/townevents for all of our event information.
Wonderful. Council members, do you have any questions about this weekend's event?
So just reiterating, from 3:00 to 7:00 on Saturday, it's not, it won't go as late as a lot of our other events are going.
Right.
Okay. Wonderful. Just wonderful.
I'll go with that.
Yes.
Wonderful. Just wonderful.
Yes, absolutely.
Work on the weather. Make sure the weather's good.
Yeah, and it looks like it might be. All right. Jacana, would you like to continue on with presentation number three, 2024 Fort Mill Veterans Day Ceremony?
Yes, we ask the public to join us as we host our Veterans Day Ceremony on Monday, November the 11th at 10:30 AM. It is held at the Veterans Memorial at 106 North White Street in the town. We are always very proud to honor all of our veterans who have served in the United States military. Our road closures will begin at 9:00 AM for Ford North White Street from Main to McCammon, and then the road will open up around noon. Our ceremony details, Mayor Savage always provides special remarks for us. Town council will be involved with our invocation and pledge. Fort Mill High School, Marine Corps, JROTC will do our presentation of Retirement of Colors. The South Carolina Strawberry Festival Queens will do the 2024 Veterans Day theme and poster. The Fort Mill American Legion Post 43 will do our rifle volley, and then we have special music by Nicole Brash and Eternal Harmony. And our guest speaker for this event is Lieutenant Colonel Brian G. Forrester. He's the commander of the 3rd Battalion, 39th Infantry Regiment, 165th Infantry Brigade in Fort Jackson. And then also, we are doing outreach event from November the 1st through the 11th. The USO of North Carolina serves military members and their families that travel through Charlotte Regional Airport, and we are asking for donations for them. They have a lounge area that they have, military families can access when they're traveling through with their entire family. So we are collecting non-perishable items, personal care, hygiene items, and then also lounge needs for that, and you can drop those off at Fort Mill Town Hall, 200 Tom Hall Street during those dates. And this list will be posted on our town website. And this is just some pictures from last year. And then Knowledge Perk Coffee, they will provide free coffee drinks to everyone before and after the event, and we do have parking available at Veterans Park, 106 North White Street, and that will be opened up until about 10:15 AM is when our PD will close that down. And then again, fortmillsc.gov/townevents, and follow Town of Fort Mill on social media, and we just look forward to seeing everyone there as we honor everyone who has served.
Wonderful. Again, wonderful. Jacana, you and Chris and all those that work with our events, we're very fortunate. The events for the fall are my favorites moving into Christmas, and it doesn't happen by mistake. So thank you so much for all the effort that you put into this. Really looking forward to attending. I can't believe November's this close. The year has flown by. All right. Any questions?
Wonderful.
All right. Now we're gonna have presentation number four, Fire Department's Activities for the 2324 Fiscal Year. Chipper Wilkerson, our very own chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is great to be here with you to tell you a little bit about what we did in a year. And I told Chris earlier today that I keep it to 1:45, I promise.
Not wonderful.
Hey, there'll be data and metrics to go with it, so I'm happy.
All joking aside, it is, it is very difficult to put together what you do in a year in a little snippet, so. We'll start with some basic incident responses you see from past fiscal years. We're up 10% this year, and this is a different look than you've seen in the past. It has all been calendar years, so this is a snapshot of our fiscal year. You see the breakdown of our incidents, majority medical, then the other ones that do fall in. A key look at some elements of importance. We were dispatched to 91 structured fires between us and mutual aid partners. We were actual found fires, 30 in structures. From all the different highlights of bigger, what you would see, normal big incidents that most people would think about, the things that aren't listed here are diabetic issues, going to cardiac issues, trouble breathings, gunshot wounds, self-inflicted wounds, grass fires, power lines, all of those, it just gets too long of a list, but you see some of the bigger items in this list. A breakdown of our mutual aid, majority of it is happening or in our total response by area. The majority's coming into town limits. Our county contract area generates a little bit of call volume for us, and so do our automatic aid department responses. A breakdown of the aid, we tend to give a little more aid than we receive, but that's just luck and nature of the year. A view of how our normal day looks, normal curve that you've seen in the past, and how it peaks in the, you know, 12, 13, 14 hour of the day. By the month, nothing real significant here from year to year. The normal months that are higher tend to be the normal months year to year as well. Response time across the district, and this is priority responses, lights and sirens within our primary district. So you see our averages of turnout, they let us know we have a call to getting out the door. Then our travel time, meaning the time they go en route till they get on scene, and then the total response time, pushing them together what those times look like. And the good calls help average the slower ones across the different parts of the town. Not going into the major metrics like we did in July here. This is a big one here, the simultaneous incidents. These are increasing year to year, and just as we have more calls, it's gonna happen. It's a 30% increase from the previous year, and we were talking about how the hurricane affected things across the country. Half of this simultaneous increase, not the total, but the increase, was from that. Out of that day, we fared very well overall. Yes, we had some big trees, we had some power line issues, and part of the community was out of power for a little while. But across the day, 13 runs on one day and eight the next. It was a really, really good day for us. Police Department?
He's guarding the door.
Without the police department and Public Works, it would not be possible. The relationships there are great, and we couldn't do it alone as one department or the other one by themselves. It takes all of us, and it is really good to see us come together in incidents like that to get work done and get the community back to normal as quick as possible. So personnel for the year. Last fiscal year, we added three driver positions and increased our staff to 47 full-time and four part-time. I put 13 on a shift for 24 hours, three rotating shifts, and we have two in the prevention office as of last year and five in administration. We added a quarterly firefighter, firefighter quarter program, and Timothy Boyle, engineer, David Spence, captain, Joseph Hart, engineer at the time of the ward who's since been promoted to captain, and David Boortz, engineer, were our recipients, and engineer Boyle retired April this last year. We did graduate recruit Class Eight and Nine, and those were some fun times, and from the graduation, everybody saw it was hot for most of those. Really good additions to our team. The annual training, we do the normal OSHA compliance, the CPR training, our swift water refresher, our technical rescue refreshers, confined space, structural firefighting refresher, and that'll be coming up in November for us. And our annual hazmat refresher, this year we brought in chlorine response course to handle that for us this year. And roughly year to year, half of our folks refresh their EMT every other year. 12,855 total hours that we garnered in training department-wide. Last year, we had five personnel, or five personnel that are still in testing that started EMT last year and six that completed that whole process. We had some folks finish their higher education degrees, that we're proud of those and have several other ones currently in programs. Deputy Chief Moser was accepted into the EFO program, which was very competitive. They cut it off at the first 500 applications, and it helps to have a graduate in-house to write recommendations, and very competitive program to get in, so we're glad to have him in that. Our fire prevention office.
Go back and read, go back. Go back, read that last one.
I did re-certify my chief officer designation through the commission or professional credentialing as well.
Thank you.
You got me. In the fire prevention office, it does, sometimes you, people scratch their heads and go, well, what do they really do? They do a lot, and they're busy all the time. 155 plan reviews, that's building, civils, plans, hydrants, you name it, into neighborhoods and everything that happens. There are 780 properties in our records, that's up 18% from the previous year. Now, some of that can be cleaning up year to year in businesses that come in and out in suites as well. 680 properties that completed inspections, a number of re-inspections, and door hangers, that's the one I really want to point out here. That's the effort that they go out multiple times and leave a hangar, say, hey, we've been here, please call us. Give us a call, we'd like to come visit you. And then the next big one is the 34 properties sent to the building inspections department because they didn't have a town business license. So everywhere, we try to get that information to them to make sure everyone is complying with the rules set forth by the town. And the mobile food vendors, we like to have them at our events, but we want to make sure they're safe. Go through a few big purchases we had. We're grateful to receive the funding for this side-by-side. It helps us out in many different avenues, and you'll see it mostly around special events and improving the capabilities there. Last year, we purchased some anti- or particulate-reducing flash hoods in an effort to reduce cancer, and each firefighter received two of them, a primary and a backup. And you see some of the costs that are associated with some of these items. And you see some of the costs that are associated with some of these items. 14 sets of turnout gear, $53,000. It doesn't take long to, as things are escalating, so does the cost of all of this. Some new eye protection, may not seem like much to many folks, but it's nice to have a good set of eye protection depending on day or night. We were able to purchase a turnout gear drying machine and get that installed and helps improve our drying time after washes. Four saws to cut roofs and cut metal and different applications. Price really begins to ramp up fast when you're trying to outfit and improve capabilities and provide common equipment across the fleet. This one's a big one, hazmat decontent. I would have liked to have had this and I'm sure everybody on a scene, hmm, about two years ago would have liked to have this when it was 30 degrees outside and when we needed to assist an employee, that we had to put through some decontamination. And it was a little less than private. So, this is a big one to be able to deploy this and get that out there for patients or employees if needed. We, a 22-23 item is we put smart boards in our current two buildings and we've begun using those for meetings to keep stations or apparatus in stations rather than having to bring them to one location. Another huge element was air packs. Our previous fleet of air packs came from a grant many years ago and they were coming up on end of life. York County funded our fleet of air packs this last year. And a thank you to Director Morris Russell, York County Management and Council for bringing us in this program with them as part of our contract with them. 31 air packs, $186,000, the 62 cylinders and 55 masks. It saved us $267,000 this last year. So, it was really great to know that we're still leveraging that partnership. Some other miscellaneous items, we did some air quality improvements. I was able to work with Chris Pettit last year at the beginning of the fiscal year to get many of these items up and going and reduce some dehumidity in the buildings we were having trouble with and do some cleaning and some different elements. We've begun just replacing residential-grade things with commercial grade, trying to get better life out of things. For anybody that's watching and that doesn't know, we have a group of firefighters that live in these stations day-to-day and they get used all day long. The washing machine and dryer is running almost all day long. It's really amazing they last at all. We replaced some mattresses, dayroom furniture. And we added some dedicated training tables and chairs at the end of last fiscal year, right as we brought in Class 8. You've seen some station logos come out this year. And this is something that you see across the country. When this, when we brought the program in, I looked at the captains of the stations and said, here, you come together, you work it out, you bring back a vetted idea between yourself that you all agree upon and we'll go forward from there and give approval. The concept behind this is creating a sense of community in the primary response area. How can you take something in your primary response area and build some community? That's the goal of what we're doing with this. The opening of Station 2 in the Catawba Ridge High School was almost together. They were really close. And the two have bonded well together is a better way, a good way of saying it. The crews go to as many events as they can, the band brings food across when they have food. The school TV program came out, did a whole, put them through, we put them through all kinds of things in the station to give them a sense of what it's like to be a firefighter. We've had some visits from interested students and how do I do this in the future out of this? And they're now offering a dual credit course with York Tech for EMT. That's big in what we do. And it is full this year and they're expanding that next year. We found that out Friday. Engineer Thomas Vargabedian took the ideas and the in-house concepts and went to the dual credit York Tech digital art design class in the school. Said, here's our idea, y'all bring some stuff back to us. And they did. And this was a little fuzzy design. This is one that I, that wasn't the original handout you had, but it was the best one I could get to blow up. Which brings me to, well, I brought my guest here. I found out about this a little late. The visits to the schools and events, they go as much as they can, within reason, within calls and different things. They really latched on to the softball team. And the, Nate, if you don't mind, this is Nate's engineer. Nate Anderson, this brainchild on the plaque. And I recently found out that he purchased this himself and did this for the school. So, giving him. Credit where it's due. And they were able to participate in the, in the program they did at the football game a few weeks ago. That relationship and them being there and seeing them, if you see on the side of their class ring, it has a fire truck on it. What high school kids would want that, you know? Without that good mentorship or just, hey, we're here for you. So, that's what we're after when we're trying to create community. Now, it may not always be a high school, it may not always be, but that's just the relationship as the two buildings came together in the two entities. And I will end with our award of the, what sounds funny, and I'll tell you more about that in the upcoming agenda item, the 23 safer grant for 4.223 million dollars. And I'll hold that for new business, but that's how we ended our fiscal year. So, overall, it was a very good fiscal year.
It was an outstanding fiscal.
Yes, it was.
Different word. You know, I think it's really important that we love each and every one of our staff members. Chipper, you take the cake in presentations and the way that you manage your information to help us understand the importance of all the work that our firefighters and our fire department does. So, I think we should give them a standing ovation. Couldn't be more proud.
Well, it wouldn't get done without everything happening on the street. So, without them, we wouldn't be successful.
But you epitomize what we call community, so thank you ever so much.
Chipper, quick question, how much does the gear weigh? Yeah, I see the breathing, you know, your air tanks and I know it's ridiculous heavy, I've tried it on before, so.
The new ones are heavier.
Are they?
They've changed some things in them and it adds, we say roughly 70, 75 pounds by the time you put gear, pack, tools, and really go to work.
Wow, in the heat.
In the heat.
That's crazy.
And we put a focus on physical fitness, provide equipment, give them time and really want to see that as a part of their day.
I had, I did have a couple notes, questions, part of it, because you guys really are one of the departments, as Gwen said, that just, we see every day. And one of the questions I had was CPR training, is there an opportunity? Don't necessarily have the answer, but I'd like for us to look at how we can take some of our certified instructors and provide CPR training to other employees. And then maybe outside of that, you know, for council or people in the community at some point.
Employees, we already do. And it's just something I didn't add in here, but our Battalion of Medical handles coordination with that with Kathy. And we do multiple departments and do the, many of, some of the OSHA training for them as well where we can.
That's awesome.
Can you add us to that list?
Yes.
Because I'd love to get re-certified, honestly. And then the other thing I wanted to say is congratulations on finding a way to reach high school students. Because you guys do a phenomenal job and we see the touch of truck, when we do the badges in school. You guys do a great job of elementary and middle school, but high school, we're trying to get to that next level and that dual credit enrollment is huge. Yeah, I briefly mentioned a second ago and I'm not one to brag about kids or any of that, but I'm highly involved at Catawba Ridge because of my two youngest. And that dual credit makes a big difference if they're applying for colleges. But there's so many people that on the firefighting side don't even want college. But to be able to get a certification that when they come out, they're ready to work, that's amazing. So, congratulations on building that and not only getting the, the class up and running, but having it full is huge and, you know.
I don't know how the school district did that, but that one just, it took a lot of interest. And I have filled in some conversations with some school district folks about a fire-oriented program. Don't know where that's going to go in the future because we have hired from other parts of, other school districts in the county, right out of high school that have come through those programs.
If there's anything I personally can do to help with it because of my communication with Catawba Ridge, just let me know. And it's a little bit touching, my daughter's dual credit is in digital art and design. So, to be able to see the logo and it's just full circle of how you talked about in the beginning, the partnership within your departments, but to see the partnerships of the schools and the different career paths.
It gave those students an opportunity to have a real-world project. And see it every day.
Absolutely. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you, Chipper. And thank you all for being the people that we all look up to. Thank you so much. All right, now we're going to move into old business item number one, second reading and ordinance annexing York County tax map numbers, 738-0000-063 and a portion of 738-0000-062 containing approximately 5.25 acres located at the intersection of Fort Mill Parkway and Holbrook Road, Penelope. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you remember, over the summer, we had deferred this case so we could actually do a new study for the right-in, right-out with Access 2. So, that analysis has been done. With this access plan, the Holbrook Commercial Access 2 is expected to operate at a level service C during both the peak hours and the North Dobie's Commercial Access 2 is expected to operate at a level service of B. The developers also installed a no U-turn sign on the westbound approach of intersection of Fort Mill Parkway and Holbrook Road, North Dobie's Bridge Road, per the latest TMA version. And this is just, again, the request from council to make Access 2 into a right-in, right-out and with a left directional turn into the development.
Okay. Counsel?
And so, Penelope, can you go a little bit slower on what those changes were for that area? I remember when we're looking at the map that DOT gives us, left and right doesn't always seem left and right, it's always flipped backwards.
Sure. I don't know what page number, the document you have, the last page of the exhibit one, you have the site.
It's the very last page of the document, however many pages it was.
Yes, so it's the required mitigation improvements page. So, when you're looking at the actual site, it's a rectangle box. You have basically a right-in turn going into Access 2. And then when you're leaving Access 2 to go east on the Parkway, you have a right turn. And they will be having only a left turn directional into the site.
Okay, and where is the U-turn if you're coming from? What direction? Where's the no U-turn?
The no U-turn is at the intersection where the traffic light is today at North Dobie's Bridge Road and Holbrook Road.
Okay, so they would not do a U-turn where?
At that, at that traffic light.
In that intersection, okay.
Well, we're going to tell them not to, that doesn't mean they won't.
No, I was going to say, yeah, 711 is a good example of that not working. Okay, and so how many total lanes of traffic will we now have if this is approved going down the bypass in that area? It's currently two lanes, correct? So, the applicant would be responsible for increasing it to a three lane with a center turn or?
So, when you're coming at the traffic light at North Dobie's Bridge, I mean, you're going east on the Parkway, you're going to have a one-through lane, you're going to have a right-turn lane into the actual, 100-foot of stacking of a right-turn lane into Access 2.
How many cars is 100 feet? Sorry, but I don't know.
Depends on the length.
Yeah, yeah, but average car.
So, which way is that?
Yeah, you might want to point up there, Penelope.
Yes, yep.
So, basically, what you come through the lights. Basically, would be the turn lane to come into the access.
Something my concerns before was taking a left out of there.
So, before the analysis, that enters, that access point for Access 2 was a full access movement. The other side, on the, on the left side of Fort Mill Parkway, where the parcel's already in the town limits, there is a proposed shopping center. And so, at the time of that shopping center, when they did their TIA, they had a full access movement. But because we have this annexation in front of you and part of the deferment in August was to take a look at a new analysis of only allowing a right-in, right-out. So, what happened was for the existing town parcel that's going to be developed, we went back and looked at SUDOT and that is no longer going to be a full access movement on the north side where Chris is circling, if we approve the annexation. Now, if you don't approve the annexation, then it goes back to a full access movement at that parcel.
So, that is no longer a full access movement for that parcel where the pointer is?
At the, at the intersection, that is correct. That project is separate from this annexation, but because we analyzed a new right-in, right-out for the proposed annexation parcel, that stopped the full access movement for both parcels. So, you're only going right-in, right-out and then a left turn directional coming in. If you're coming from Indianland, if you're coming from the east side of Fort Mill Parkway going west, you'll be able to make a directional left into this new annexation parcel. But on the other side of the parcel, excuse me, on the other side of the Parkway, they would only have a right turn. They would not have a full access movement.
Okay, so it looks like if you're coming out of access point one and turning right within 10 of turning left, Catawba Ridge student on their way to school, there's room for about five cars? Am I looking at that right, 125 feet?
So, access one.
That would be the left turn lane?
So, are you referring to access one?
Access one, yes.
Okay.
Think of a student or somebody trying to get to 77 and coming through the.
Sure. Access one is on Holbrook Road. So, you, the student or the person would come to the traffic light and they would have the traffic light to either go straight or make a left, you know, at that intersection. So, if they were going to the high school, they would be at that intersection and they would make a left. And then if you're coming, you want to go north to North Dobie's Bridge, there's a straight lane, with that straight lane, you could also make a right, but you're at a traffic light. Now, when you move further down, the improvements that were made with this new analysis goes with Access 2. And so, they're creating a new right-turn lane into the actual commercial project.
Right, correct. Okay, makes sense in visual person, reality today, this is what we have leaving 711, basically. When you're going 711, you can't turn left.
Correct.
You're going to have to, but the people trying, you know, students trying to get to 77, they're having to cross one lane of traffic that's going straight or turning right. Wait for somebody to be nice, let them in to be able to get to that left-hand turn lane to be able to turn left. And so, we're going to have a similar situation here from access point one.
Well, access point one, you have a traffic light.
Yeah, so the 711. Okay. All right, and then the current grade on the road, when we look at the bypass in this area, Holbrook and Dobie's Bridge. Holbrook and Dobie's Bridge, what's our current rating for that area? Not the intersection, the road?
Repeat that again?
The grade for the road at the bypass?
So basically.
In this area?
On that area, that was a, from Access Two was, um, level service of C with this improvement, and the North Dobie's Access would be a, a level service of B. But you're referring to the, the actual Holbrook and Dobie's Bridge?
The bypass area, so from that light towards the second Dobie's Bridge south intersection.
So going back to the original, and this is like really getting into the technical stuff, and I'm not a, a traffic engineer, but I'm going to do my best with the notes that we, we talked back in August. So basically, um, with the required mitigations and everything for, um, that was presented, the intersections were at a level of D or better. The only intersection or area that had, um, you know, less than a D or better was Hair Road. And that was if y'all remembered me, um, mentioning how there was like a stop-controlled approach, and there was nothing that could be made at that Hair Road for improvement. But everything else, the actual level of service, because of, um, not having, you know, four lanes on the Parkway, it's already bad without this actual development. And when I say bad, it's level service of D or, um, you know, C, A, or B.
I thought it was D, and then without this mitigation, it would be a F or something. It was, I had to go back and read that whole study again, but it was.
So with this mitigation?
Yeah.
It is improving.
Yeah, it definitely made it.
The right-in, right-out is improving the level of service. And so it is basically, for my traffic engineer that gave me this information, it is basically going to a level of C, and then the other one improved it to the level of service of B. But again, it's for the access points of, um, Access Two.
But the road itself is still a D or worse, essentially?
D or better.
D or better? Because I thought a lot of these were Fs at some point.
That was, well, I think they were D, but they would be without, with the, without this mitigation, it was going to be at F, a D or a F. And that's what brought this conversation up, because it was, even with the original mitigation, it was still bad, yeah.
Yes, and again, without the actual, it's just, the Parkway, just the way it's congested, it's already bad.
Yeah.
It's not with new developments that's existing. But we looked into the analysis of not making Access Two, Access Two as a full access movement. And with this right-in, right-out, there was some improvement.
And I do appreciate the applicant and yourself, staff, working through, um, the questions and concerns with this. But back to the original pros and cons of this that's being brought before us. Our options are, if we don't annex it, it's five acres roughly, if I remember correctly, a maximum of eight homes was what could be on this property.
Give or take, one acre lots.
Was the maximum, the way it's zoned currently today. Versus approval of this would open us up for, um, how many trip count on the traffic coming through here?
So based what the analysis was done, um, they used 2028 background traffic, um, projections, and they are pro, um, projecting the highest use for this. So, um, this calculation was for an 8,760 square foot strip, um, retail plaza with a 7,200 square foot high turnover sit-down restaurant and a fast food.
Right.
Um, restaurant.
And what was that count? Do you have that?
I don't have that in front of me.
And, and I do understand and appreciate, again, the applicant went above and beyond, um, giving us worst-case scenario and making the assumptions less, but less to me is still not going to be eight homes, so.
Well, I want to ask about that because I need clarity. Is it eight homes if it was single-family units? Or is that property currently zoned and could accommodate town homes or apartments?
Let me, um.
Based off it not being the town.
It's in the town.
Correct. Counsel would have to authorize any extension of water and sewer service to those properties. So absent that, and absent them, I don't believe the parcel's big enough for them to do any community water facility or anything of that nature. So generally speaking, you're looking at well and septic, which means you're looking at one acre lots. So it'd be five homes in, that's, yeah.
So what is the example of a high turnover, sit-down, like a Zaxby's or something like that? Not really like a Chick-fil-A or McDonald's?
Yeah, I mean.
Sunny's Barbecue? Saki's Friends?
Waffle House if you have a teenager.
Something that doesn't have a, a drive-through.
Okay, all right. So it'd be one of those in addition to like a fast food?
And again, this is just the analysis. Right now, the applicant has no tenants, but because of traffic impact analysis, they wanted to see the most intense, what needed to be done for mitigation. So they wouldn't have to come again to redo it, um.
I appreciate that. I wish everybody did that.
Yeah.
That was great work.
Counsel?
Uh, I appreciate all the work's been done to this there. Again, my heartburn is with all the other development in there. I personally just have concerns of approving any additional commercial or residential less than one per acre. I think it's, it's a node, it's in the overlay. I think, I, I think it's the right fit for there. I think it's the wrong time. We've got now movement on Harris Teeter. We've got Elizabeth going on, and that was my original concerns, is not with what he's planning on doing there. But, uh, it's just a lot going on. It's a very busy area.
You care to put that in the motion?
I can, but I was just, that was just, I mean.
I know, and it's extremely hard.
Yeah, this is, this is, I get a lot of heartburn out of this because I think he's, is exactly what needs to go there. It's just, like I said, Harris Teeter's moving on. We've got, this is a very busy area. You've got that place across there. Every time I drive through there, I look at it, and it's just, it's a lot. And it's not his fault. It's not any developer's fault. It's all that traffic on the Parkway, and at times it's not safe. And then you've got, uh, got property right there on Holbrook, which is going to be right behind it, so.
I think it's important.
We just lost our fire people.
Please be safe. I think it's important to ask too, when we have an applicant that's looking at a situation and they do the necessary research, do they not take into account the approved usage of surrounding properties and the impact that it would have on the roadway serving those same properties?
They do, they do.
Yeah, Mayor, one, uh, one of these discussions, I know I asked Penelope, I said, I would really like to see a regional thing of what's already in that area that's approved. So property across the street's coming on. We've got Harris Teeter right there. There's probably some other things, but I mean, Elizabeth, it'd be really nice because we're micro-focused on that piece of property. And I understand that, that's what's on this.
Sure.
But I'm more concerned about that whole area, and, and Harris Teeter and Elizabeth is what gives me a lot of heartburn.
Yeah, so just to, um, clarify, this is not a rezoning. I mean, it's first an annexation. So to, to answer your question, a lot of the items, the parcels already on the Parkway that are in the town limits are zone commercial. So this one is not zone commercial. It's in the county. So, um, you know, there's a lot of development, because with raw land and, and land that's already in the town, zone commercial, you are going to get either your, your gas stations, your retail stores, or, you know, um, Hair Cedar. So there's, you know, I mean, I could tell you all the areas along there with Elizabeth having frontage with commercial. There will be different types of commercial uses. The one across the street, I mean, the Hair Cedar, the community has been waiting for over 10 years. That's on, in the pipe for Hair Cedar. And then all those out parcels in Hair Cedar, um, are just your fast food or sit-down restaurants or a gas station.
Nail salon.
Nail salon, I mean, again, but you have to keep in mind that's zoned, um, you know, commercial. And so for tonight, you know, the question is, you know, does council feel, um, the need to annex this prof, parcel into the town limits? And if you do, with the annexation, it does have the highway commercial, which kind of squares up the four corners.
Oh, that fits. I mean, I was going to say, I was going to get your heart, it actually fits right there. It's just, the timing's bad.
Sure.
That's just me speaking, but that's.
And if you annex, I think I know the answer to this question, but I just want to hear it again. We annex this under HC designation, then that doesn't come back before us for approval on anything on this property, right? Or does it? Because some commercial does not once it's annexed.
So when it's annexed and it's zone highway commercial, we have a commercial appearance review that goes to the planning commission. And so the planning commission, when they receive the commercial appearance review, they are not approving the use. They are approving the building elevations, the landscaping to make sure aesthetically pleasing for the commercial. And so, you know, once we have the annexation and the zoning, that is correct, Mr. Moody. It doesn't come back to council, but it does go through the planning commission for elevation drawings, um, and building materials.
And to answer Councilman Wolf's question, I do believe with the upcoming uh, 10-year plan review and modification, we will have opportunities to discuss the very things that I, I know you're concerned about, uh, we all are. So we will have an opportunity to do that in the upcoming months.
Yeah, and just for the audience to know.
Right.
Um, the, the town, every 10 and five years, we update our comprehensive plan. We are actually going to rewrite it because so much things have changed, the growth. And with the rewrite of the comprehensive plan is the lane use element, um, and the future lane use map. And so we will be having public engagement, opportunities to see how do we want to see the town of Fort Mill, um, grow in, in direction with residential, commercial, industrial, park space, um, and anything else.
Right.
There's no other discussion. I'd like to make a motion to deny old business item number one.
I have a motion, uh, to deny.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Old business item number two, second reading. An ordinance amending the town's business license ordinance so as to add additional language relating to enforcement of the code, Chris Pettit.
Thank you, Mayor. I feel like I should say more, but I'm just going to say there's been, been no changes.
All right. You sure there's nothing else you could add?
I could go on for an hour, but I think I'll be up there.
Make a motion to approve old business item number two?
All right, I got a motion to approve.
A second.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, thank you. We'll move into the new business items. New business item number one, fire safer grant acceptance, Chipper Wilkerson.
All right, as we concluded a few minutes ago, as we ended the, the fiscal year, we were notified of accept, or of award of a, what's called a 2023, uh, safer grant award. 2023 appropriated, applied for in '24, and then funding as that begins. So our history of safer grants were in the 2015. We received one for two years in salary and benefits, uh, for 1.021 million that, uh, brought in six firefighters, two per 24-hour shift that we implemented in 2016. And this one here is three years of salary and benefits. It is 15 firefighters total, five per 24-hour shift. That would be implementation in March of 2025. There were 20, 2,161 applicants. 3.124 billion dollars requested. Um, out of that, 191 grants were awarded. Six were in South Carolina. Hours was the largest. The, um, other one, the other highest was 426,000. The other five totaled were 1.2 million. They were all in recruitment and retention. Hours was for hiring. Uh, there was a 8.8% chance of award out of this. And the grant is written performance improvement-based. Um, the area that this was designated and looking for was adding and improving response times in parts of the community and increasing the number of firefighters per structure fire. That is the, the ultimate goal, um, for compliance with NFPA 1710. Process and timeline that this followed. 3/8, we submitted to application. I think Chris was on vacation. It just happened to.
Sorry.
It just happened to time itself out perfectly.
Make a note of that.
That was a fun, that was a fun day. And 9/22, we were awarded. Um, I called Chris and it, it was kind of comical. He said, I thought it was just spam coming through, just because we get FEMA stuff all the time. And just, you know, just hadn't got to everything. I said, no, look at, look at that again. And, um, uh, so the other parts of the timeline, on January 4th, that's a Saturday, would be our written and physical exam. It'll be a mostly all-day event. January 13th through the 31st would be interviews and candidate selection. Chief Moser and a group of represent, a representative group from the department do the first rounds of interviews to say, yes, this person can work in our team, or I don't think this person's going to work out in our team. Then it progresses up, up the chain from there. February and March would be medical clearance, background checks, all the things we do pre-hire with a start date of March 24th for a, for Class 10 with a 16-week recruit school. This gives us an opportunity to get a few other things that we would like to see done and provides that opportunity. And then they would graduate on July 11th. Cost to the town, all salary scheduled overtime. That's just built into their schedule already. Nothing we don't already do. And benefits are covered for three years. Becky and I worked many days, Becky and HR, getting down to the finest detail of every little penny we could put in this grant that, that would be covered. That's covered. The things that are not covered are PPE, uh, uniforms and training. So $15,000 per firefighter. The PPE, $7,600, 16 items, just gives you an idea of the things we have to go through and purchase. We're going to rent turnout gear through recruit school. We tear up a decent amount of turnout gear training. We found a company that, or Chief Griffin found a company that, um, rents turnout gear that we're going to utilize for this and saves a tremendous amount of money in the long run. Uh, uniforms, uh, $3,300, 29 pieces of items for, for uniforms and training. Uh, Swiftwater and EMT Basic. Uh, Chief Griffin and I met with York Tech on Friday. We are going to work with HR to create what is known as an apprenticeship program. York Tech had already begun some conversations with Marin and Becky, and we're going to continue that. And there's a very solid chance that EMT will not, not cost us anything. Uh, the cost you see, um, uh, is, is the worst-case scenario if something happens. Uh, $225,000 total for all 15 firefighters. And we will also need to make three promotions or six promotions total, three captains, three engineers, roughly 5% in each position. Uh, this is a snapshot of the budget amendment you have coming. You see the revenues coming in and the expenditures going out are balanced. Um, Eric pulled those numbers together, and it's just a future snapshot of what you're about to vote on next. And you see each one of those items rolling through. The ultimate outcomes and results. It adds needed firefighters for Engine Three that would staff future Fire Station Three. Uh, Engine Three would operate from Station Two while the construction would, would occur. The stations are designed for a continuity of operations. That station goes down, you have somewhere to send them immediately if something happens. Things happen. It, it's amazing the number of fires in a fire station. Things happen, um, across the country. And we did this when COVID happened, when we needed to separate staff a little more as well. It would increase our daily staffing to 18 with a minimum of 15. We talked a good bit about this in July in the workshop, and I won't go into, to details there. But that would be our daily staffing on a ladder, two engines, our squad and our battalion chief on duty. Will put us at 62 full-time firefighters, including the one additional, uh, person in the Fire Marshal's office that's in this current fiscal year that's approved, and our four part-time employees. Really, it puts more firefighters on labor intent, labor intensive incidents quicker. It provides better response distribution around the town and provides better capability to handle those simultaneous incidents that are happening. My request is. My request is to accept or approve staff, it'll be Chris pressing the button, to accept the 2023 FEMA Safer Grant to hire 15 firefighters and then also to approve the budget amendment 25-01 needed to execute the 2023 FEMA Safer Grant to hire those 15 firefighters.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Outstanding work on the Safer Grant, absolutely.
I was, we had a lot of conversations internal and I thought they might have to pick me up off the floor at one point when I read.
Chief, I will say that the time was well spent in July on going through your metrics and needs and why this is so important. If it wasn't for this, I have like five pages of questions, but you laid out a perfect plan. You laid out a good detail of why this is important, and I think this is where a good payoff, not for the grant, but us understanding why the need is so important.
Yes.
The biggest thing I took out of that was time means lives. So I think bringing the staff on with plans for Station Number 3 helps us understand why it's so critical. So I do appreciate you being so diligent on providing information. It gives us something to make decisions off of and understanding. Otherwise, like, well, we've got Fire Station Number 2. Why do we need Fire Stations Number 3? So I want to thank you for your time and effort putting that together to help educate us on why this needs is so great. And there again, congratulations. Or to use the mayor's word for not wonderful.
And I would be remiss if I didn't thank FEMA and ultimately, you know, bringing this to Chris at that point when he was in charge, so to speak, and him bringing it to you guys and being willing to go for this opportunity. And being awarded it also shows the need because they don't award them if you can't show the need.
Great job.
So going from the eight-week to the 16-week, what's your, what's the additional? Is that adding the EMT Basic into it?
The last group we did was 12? 13?
Just 12.
12. We did 12. We're adding 15. Requires more time to do everything. It takes that many more evolutions. You need that many more cars to cut, that many more runs in the burn building. It just takes longer. Chief Griffin's built a great schedule that's added plenty of time for all the various elements. And we are going to bring in some emergency vehicle driver training and get a few minor other things out of the way. Minor, but class-wise, minor in the big scope. EMT, with the process, working with York Tech, it looks like we have a class that will start in January this coming year. And these group, this group here, will start August, around August 13-ish. We picked a date that worked in the academic calendar year for them as well.
And is this training something we're doing here, so to speak, or they have, I know police usually they have to go to Columbia, so it's something that's done local?
Yes. In the past, we had hired folks with training. We put them through proficiency for eight weeks or so. Just getting to know them, knowing where to place them on the shift and that sort of thing. Chief Griffin has done this in his past life and has been a recruit, training officer, and along with all the other staff involved that go into that to teach the classes, we do what we call zero to hero. Zero experience to hero. And take them from nothing to full training. And one of the gentlemen in the back row just finished. And he was a local Fort Mill graduate, Nation Forward, and we're able to snag him early.
Well, and given that with the dates that you have, will there be a way to maybe accommodate in some way if we've got somebody doing the dual-credit EMT? The timing's going to be slightly off for this calendar. I'm sure you'll work with York Tech to take advantage of a local recruit.
As far as high school at that point, we wouldn't be able to because they hadn't graduated high school yet. So this one would not work out to where we could bring someone in. Now, could they, this current year's could, but not next year's. I'm sorry. I understand what you're saying now. So there is potential. So we're, as Semrell pointed out, tomorrow is 10:15, so there's a little significance to hiring, you know, announcing this tomorrow on the 15th day and for 15 firefighters. And so there's going to be a big push tomorrow to push this out upon your approval and start a recruitment effort pretty hard.
Incredible.
Griff, it's going to be nice to not have a middle-of-the-summer recruit class, huh?
All right. Any further questions for Chipper? You're wonderful.
Do we need to make an actual motion to approve this?
I think the first reading is in the next item, is it not? No?
Yeah.
Yes? Yes, that's what I was thinking. Thank you. All right, new business item number two, first reading, ordinance adopting a budget amendment to accept the Fire Safer Grant. Eric Davis. Wizard, how are you?
Where's the hat?
Does a motion need to be made directly to accept the grant for instruct staff to accept the grant?
That's what you're standing up there doing right now.
That's what we're doing.
Okay, right. I just flew in from Boston earlier today. Boyer, my arm's tired. Thank you, Mayor, Council. So agenda item number two under new business is the first reading of a budget amendment adopting or amending the budget ordinance for this fiscal year. You see in your packet the total grant for the current fiscal year as well as the match would be $1,075,000. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but the chief did an excellent job describing everything to you. So there's really nothing else I can add to that.
I would be honored.
Yes.
Move to accept new business item number two.
I'll second. Yes, acceptance and second. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Good. We get to keep all our counsel. All right, Eric.
Yes, ma'am.
New business item number three. First reading ordinance adopting a budget amendment for the Public Works Operations Center.
Yes, ma'am.
I am uncomfortable proceeding with this one. I know I'm not in a seat to make a motion to defer. However, I would like to consider item 3, 4, and 5. I think we need time in front of council for us to digest information before we actually take it to a reading. So I am.
I agree, and thank you for breaking ice. You've already got my digest word in there, so I can't say. I have to chew on these, I have to chew on these type of things. And we have not met or gotten any details on these. I know they're in the work, and I know that the town manager sent out the CIP recommendations or proposals.
Yes.
But we have not met. I have no information. I would prefer to defer new business item 3, 4, and 5 until we have more information and a chance to discuss as a council. I just think I'm not, personally, I'm not ready to make a recommendation or a vote on it. I just, I don't have enough information. So
Okay.
That would be my proposal. And Barry, I don't know.
Be your motion.
I need a motion. Can we do all three of them, or we need to do individually?
Yeah, that was going to be my question. We have to do them individually. All right, Chris?
I'll make a motion to defer new business item 3
Do I have a second?
To the next, to the next meeting.
Probably at least two meetings. The first meeting in November so that we'll have time to get a meeting.
Give us the workshop just.
First meeting in November.
First meeting in November. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I?
Sure.
So we have advertised a public hearing for your meeting on October 28th. Would you be interested in having this reappear on that agenda for either briefing prior to the 28th or at the 28th? But just so that we can continue, at least with that potential public hearing for the budget amendments?
I think that we need adequate time to review the information. We can do it before the 28th if it works for council. If it does not, then that next meeting is typically a workshop. We'll be happy to do it then.
Yeah, there would be a second meeting after that required, obviously, for the two readings. But my thought is if you defer it until November in your motion, then we'll have to re-advertise. Whereas if you defer it to your next meeting on the 28th, we could either meet before that or brief you at your meeting on the 28th, still have that public hearing, and then there'd have to be another reading thereafter.
If we need to do that, we might need to do that because I think council has to have an opportunity to review information before sitting down and making a decision.
Yeah, I understand. I just wanted to make sure you guys understood that it was advertised and just so you understand the timeline.
Yes, we do. So I am sitting with a motion to defer until the first meeting in November. Chris, and I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Business item number four. Chris, would you want to continue?
I'd like to make a motion to defer new business item number four until the first meeting in November.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And number five.
I'd like to make a motion to defer new business item number five until the first meeting in November.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, thank you.
We actually have two new business items, number five, on the agenda. If you want to clarify from there forward or not.
I'll name it six and correct as we go.
5A.
Yeah, I'll correct as we go. How about that? All right. Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Wizard.
We're not going to let you get off so early. So easy next time.
New business item number six, resolution of the governing body of the town of Fort Mill authorizing an application for a basic infrastructure grant from the South Carolina Rural Infrastructure Authority to rehabilitate the Link Street Gravity Sewer. Carrie Vargit.
Thank you, Mayor. The Link Street Gravity Sewer is actually a clay pipe that was installed in the 1930s, so making it approximately 100 years old.
Dang.
Or about 50 years past its useful life. So after evaluating the needs of the entire collection system, the Utilities Department identified a series of 18 manholes to rehabilitate or replace an approximately 3,200 linear feet of gravity sewer. Again, ought to be replaced in 2025. So the resolution in front of you this evening is to authorize the submission of a grant in the amount of $1,500,000 and pledging up to $810,350 of town funds for a total project cost of $2,310,350.
All right. Carrie, can you fill in a little bit of blanks? So what, replacement of the remaining sewer line for that whole area? For 800 feet or what? There you go. Here's a good example. Like the details about what, obviously, it's a grant, so I'm all for it.
Yep. Yes. So literally, this is a program, from what I understand, the town takes advantage of on an annual basis for both water and sewer replacement funds. The total detail I have is the 18 manholes to either be rehabilitated or replaced, replacement of 3,200 linear feet, and it does include, I'll say, gravity sewer replacement and gravity sewer pipe bursting. Now, I left that out because I have just about that much detail in reference to that. I know it's essentially the destruction of the pipe and the replacements almost immediately.
So we're going to dig up the street? I mean, that's kind of, so it's going to run down, it's got the manhole cover, it's going to dig up? Because I know there's some complaints on that area of the street too, or so we're going to repair them. Is the streets part of that too?
Yeah, well, so again, my understanding of much of our infrastructure is some of it's under the street, some of it's not. Depends on the area of the town. But certainly, if the streets are impacted, they will be repaved thereafter.
But is that part of the grant? Is that included in the grant, or is that going to be?
Is it total turnkey cost that you provided to us?
That's my understanding, yes.
I know when they did Skipper Street, they actually pulled the pipe inside of the terracotta pipe and busted it as they pulled it in.
Yeah, that's the sewer pipe bursting. I've never seen it done, but I did watch a video and did a little bit of research.
You're down south now. We do things different here.
I think that's ingenious.
Make it work.
And when would we know award of the grant and when would the $810,000 be budgeted?
That'll be budgeted. Realistically, I'm not sure how quickly we're going to get to the project. My guess is it's going to be closer towards the end of our fiscal year. But if it's going to require a budget amendment, we'll take care of that at the appropriate time.
So do we know when it'll be awarded?
I don't. I don't know when to expect an award.
Okay.
My first experience with this particular grant program, I do know we take advantage of it on an annual basis.
Further questions, council?
I make the motion to approve new business item number 5B.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve new business item number six. All those in favor, please say aye.
Let's do it as number six. You don't want a 5A and a 5B.
Okay.
I said six.
No, you did. She did.
New business item number six.
Still second.
Alan still seconds.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. New business item number seven, resolution for a public event in which alcoholic beverages may be sold, possessed, and consumed and to authorize a special event permit for live music and sound amplifying equipment on Saturday, October 19th, 2024, at Walter Elijah Park, 345 North White Street. Jocana, welcome again.
Hi. Yes, we are seeking a resolution designating Walter Elijah Park, 345 North White Street on Saturday, October 19th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. as the site of a public event in which alcoholic beverages may be sold, possessed, and consumed and to authorize a special event permit for live music and sound amplifying equipment on this date and time. And all the details are in the resolution.
And I don't have a question specifically about this, but as a council, we've asked in the past to try to have these combined into, you know, one or two resolutions. Worst case, once a quarter where it's coming before us, where we're not approving a resolution the week before or the week of an event that's already advertised, already has vendors coming in. I mean, it's putting us in a hole. Not that we wouldn't approve this item, but you're not, we're not given the opportunity to really do our due diligence and speak on behalf of our citizens if we are pigeon-like this. So while I'm not against this, I would still want to challenge staff to bring these to us in a more timely manner. Or as we've also discussed, change the ordinance so that if it's a town-sponsored event, we don't necessarily even have to bring it to us. So my one comment, and then I'll make a motion for approval of new business item number seven.
I have a motion to approve new business item number seven.
I'll second.
And I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. New business item number eight, resolution accepting the streets within the Anniston-Chase subdivision into the town of Fort Mill. Street maintenance system penality.
Yes, ma'am. This is for the Anniston-Chase subdivision. Everything has been 100% built out. We have the maintenance agreement. And it's really for your, either to approve or disapprove for into the street acceptance.
So it has everything it needs for us to accept it.
Yes.
The picture you have on the screen, it's showing undeveloped areas.
Yes.
Has been developed.
Yes. Say that again, Mr. Helm.
The picture you have on the screen, it's showing development undeveloped.
It's developed.
I picked that one out. I saw it too.
You couldn't fit another one in there with a shoe on it.
So, and there's a, there's a one-year warranty. And they have a, was it a bond that gets posted also?
Yes, because this is part of the new street acceptance process. We have in our hand $317,542.76 in a warranty bond for a year. And the applicant, you know, the representative from Anniston-Chase is here as well, Mr. Collins.
Great. Any question or do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve new business item number eight.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, committee report number one. Fort Mill Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee for Fiscal Year 24 State Accommodations Tax Grant Award Recommendations. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, wizard.
Thank you, Mayor. The town of Fort Mill receives applications annually for dispersment of collected state accommodations tax revenue. So in 2024, the town of Fort Mill was awarding grants based on 2023's revenue as well as any unallocated funds from prior years. This year, the total amount available for cash grants was $176,126. As you'll recall, staff learned this summer that the town of Fort Mill had been erroneously receiving revenue from establishments that are not located inside our corporate limits and that have been ongoing for several years. This reporting correction resulted in far less dollars being available for distribution to the grant applicants. So by way of comparison, the 2023 grant distribution was $489,509. So that was a jolt to the town as well as the applicants. So that was a jolt to the town as well as the applicants themselves. The committee members met initially on September 17th, then again on September 24th, 2024, to review four applications. The town of Fort Mill had initially submitted a grant application to the committee, but then pulled its application due to drastically reduced funding availability. The committee was provided documentation regarding the South Carolina Accommodation Tax Code of Laws, and the committee interviewed each applying entity, and based on the information received, voted for the following recommendations. The Ann Springs Closed Greenway, $86,691. Fort Mill Economic Partners, $23,568. Fort Mill History Museum, $54,079. And Visit York County, $11,788. And it's important to note that when the history museum was being voted on, Ms. Humbert did recuse herself from voting. So upon approval from the Fort Mill Town Council, each applicant will be provided the funding and will be required to administer the funding per the South Carolina Accommodation Tax Code of Laws. Applicants will be required to provide supporting documentation, including receipts on how the funding was used, and documentation will be sent to the South Carolina Department of Revenue for their review. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
And I think important for the people that are watching, this is a program that is set by the state. We do not make the rules for the program. We only apply and administer them. So the town is in a position to excitedly try to help those entities that bring tourism to Fort Mill that spend the night. That's why it's called accommodations. So I think it's important to really make it simplified and say, you know, that we distribute those funds according to what we are given from the state in a programmatic approach that the state defines.
Yes.
So we are doing the work of the people and are doing that to the best of our ability. Anybody have any questions or do I have a motion?
So all the funds were distributed, kind of an equal reduction or percentage based on what they applied for?
Yes, sir. It was, to say the least, it was not a fun process. Everyone struggled because we really learned after the fact, even the applicants had requested more dollars, really based on prior, prior awards. And the committee themselves, the committee members really worked hard trying to figure out the fairest, most equitable way to do that. And so they came up with a ratio of what the ask was by each applicant compared to what dollars were available. And so, so this is what they came up with.
This is just.
So this allocates all of the available dollars for '23, as well as holdover dollars from 2022.
This is just one of those tough all the way around. Because the timing, we found out right before that.
It is.
It will, it's just, and I want to thank the committee members, though. I'm sure that was a tough discussion and trying to find a, there was no good answer.
Right. And during the process, we did notify the committee as well as the applicants that basically there's about a $250,000 per year reduction. That money will actually go to York County, and we have met with York County staff, and they know that those, those additional funds will be coming to them. So, so the applicants here will be able to still apply for those dollars, they just have to go to York County.
Okay. That was my question. So they, that, they, since they are in York County, they could apply for that and have to go through that process there. Is that date already been expired or is the, can they still?
They have their process earlier in the year than we do. So, so they'll, they'll be able to apply next year.
All right. So we have been through our process. We have the set amounts. We have a committee that has made agreement, and we have made our recommendations for distribution. I need a motion to approve or not approve this item, please.
Make a motion to approve. Committee report number one.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. We do not have any information discussion items. However, we do have one executive session item. We will have an executive session to discuss an incident proposed sale of real property. Please note that counsel may take action on executive session items listed on the agenda when they come back into public session. So do I have a motion to move into executive session?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. We will return. All right, do I have a motion to?
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. All right. Let the record reflect that no vote was taken in executive session, please. All right. Mr. Hudgens, what do you have for the good of the whole now that you're a world traveler returned home?
Few things. So glad to be home. Great days. Put on a lot of miles, but it was sweet riding back into town on Thursday. Something that kind of struck a chord with me was hearing the young voices saying Pledge of Allegiance. I thought that's, it was just pretty nice. It's kind of resonated with me. That caught my ear, so that was, that's really nice. And speaking again, getting to the young voices, how articulate those young adults were was amazing. I mean, more so than many adults that I encounter on a daily basis sometimes. So it gives me great hope for, for, for the future there. Going back a couple weeks after post-storm, typical Whiteville Park, you know, if we have a storm of any sort, we're going to lose power. So all the damage that went on with the trees that were coming down, Comporium did an outstanding job. I think that's noteworthy, what they did and their crews that they had out there to cut down trees, and these were some huge trees. This took a lot of work. The power crews, obviously, I don't think there are words to describe what an outstanding job they've done. Excluding, I mean, I can't even begin to talk about the, you know, the mountains and all the other regions, but what those guys have done is outstanding. And our public works, the debris that was around our neighborhood and all neighborhoods, I'm sure, but just our older trees tend to produce a lot more junk that falls in people's yards, and they shove it all out to the roads, and sometimes as big as Volkswagen's. I know my mom had a pile three feet tall going all the way down the curb in front of her house, and so the neighbors, but public works clearing that out. And I think people forget about that, and I've said it on a regular basis, and it's kind of cliche, but it doesn't just magically disappear. There's a lot of work that goes on and without damaging the roads that are underneath that debris and the grass that's behind it and the, and the concrete curbing. It takes precision, and those guys were trying to hustle and get everything done. So outstanding job for public works. But that's, that's, I mean, thanks.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Glad to be back.
The scarecrow crawl, October's my favorite month. You know, it's seeing, seeing all the families out, walking young families, looking at all the scarecrows, just walking through town, just, you know, especially a lot of young families, maybe new families to the town, just kind of, you know, helping to kind of assimilate them into our, our, our culture in town. So I really love that. You know, Public Works and Fire Department, they were here earlier, you know, they've kind of got a little rivalry going with their, with their scarecrow projects. I hadn't got out to see all of them yet, but I'll, I'll get to this year. Last year I had a broken leg, so I couldn't get to see them. So wife and son had to go through and FaceTime and show me the scarecrows. I hated, I couldn't see those. Family Fall, the Fall Festival, excuse me, this weekend at the, at the park, I will be one of the judges of the, of the costume contest, which is, it amazes me, the, the creativity and ingenuity they come up with, with some of the costumes, from the little ones up to the big ones. So that's going to be, that's going to be really fun to see. That will be also, and if you've seen it around town, our surveillance towers, for lack of a better term, it's a company called Epic IO. That's our new surveillance towers that we've had. They're deployed throughout town to watch, you know, the, during the scarecrow crawl, and they'll also be deployed at the Fall Festival, which there's an amazing asset and tool for the police department and fire to be able to keep everybody safe. So that's going to be, that's going to be really cool to see. A force multiplier is what they, is what they call it in the, in the industry. So that's going to be really cool to see and roll tide.
Except against Vandy. Um, anyway, we mentioned it, I mentioned it a little bit during the prayer, but what I didn't bring up, what Mayor did mention, is how much our community came together. While the damage we had, like Ben said, you know, we did have some personal damage. We each had some areas we had to clean up. You know, I know family and friends living near the river definitely have suffered a lot, and we're still cleaning up from that. But the blessing in all of this is seeing how our community came together in our own talents, to what you said, whether it was making a donation, whether it was cooking, whether it was driving things up there and triaging, working on the Wi-Fi and trying to get communication up and going. To Gwen's point, just praying, and prayer works. You know, I went to Carolin's, actually Cabela's, a few weekends ago, and they had a blood drive with six buses with people donating blood to it, and I know there were over 100 pints of blood. Because what happened is when the hurricane hit, all the current blood drives they had were shut down. So number one, they had to make up from that and then try to deal with upcoming damage. So I highly encourage you, if you're not the squeamish type, it really doesn't hurt. I'm very proud of my daughter. Sarah Kate gave blood for the first time ever, which I gave when I was in high school, too. So if you're 17 and older and good health, you can still do it. Also want to give a little bit of shout out, and I'm not big on shout outs, but to see Robbie Hill, who had battled from cancer, was able to give, and he's a retired police officer from our police department. So even if you've had some medical issues, you can still get out and do that. So if that's something that you're comfortable doing, I encourage you to do it. And they also gave you all kinds of free stuff, Carolin's ticket and gift card and t-shirts, so. But, you know, we've talked a few times that this effort isn't something that's going to end. I was in college at Appalachian when Hugo hit the mountains, which is what everybody compares to, and it was nothing, nothing compared to what they experienced here. And we all talk about Hugo being the storm of our lifetime, and for the mountains, you know, this is going to be destructive for a while. So continue to pray for them. We can absolutely do that. But continue to look on social media for what their needs are. They change by the moment, and I'm really proud of our staff and our citizens and our council for coming together in the time of need. So thank you.
Thank you. Ronnie?
Ditto.
You good? You always say, "I'm good."
I'm good.
Okay. All right. My turn?
Yep.
Okay. Well, it's good to be back. Good meeting tonight, a lot accomplished. I had the opportunity to go to Montreat, and I met, well, I'm going to probably get a little emotional here, with their police chief. His name is Jeff Eaton, and he had been on the job for one month. And I walked in the door and I said, "Jeff, what do you need?" And he said, "Do you have a house?" Because I know I'm going to have one to live in. And I've never, just seen so much loss, but people, man, they, they lean on each other. And I know I'm involved with Red Truck Men in our community, and they, their owner and founder has bought a building in Black Mountain to move their operations to. They've cleared over 1,200 trees in two weeks, fed over 20,000 people, 20,000 meals so far. And they're just like an army out there. So if you're looking for a way to get involved, to help in the mountains, you know, go to their website, sign up. You can, if you want to run a backhoe or a dump truck, I mean, they've got all kinds of signups. You can run some cool equipment, right? There's a, I've talked to five or six guys that have gone up there already from Fort Mill just to help out. So that's really good. So, but yeah, just keep, as Lisa mentioned, everybody up there and your prayers. I mean, I've just, it was almost like total devastation, something you would see in a movie or like into the world. But yeah, but anyway, I've got this. I live up to my bets. I bet Councilman Garrison I would wear a jersey, South Carolina laws, but he made me wear this instead. So roll tide. I still think we should have won, but anyway. That's all I have.
Good sport.
You were really instrumental in getting some Starlink systems up for communications. Can you shed a little light on that?
Well, yeah, there was a, a lot of people in Fort Mill that, that chipped in to buy some Starlink systems, and so we were able to go into Montreat and me and a neighbor, and we donated it there to town hall. We got them back up and going. Black Mountain Police Department had a, like a distribution center where you could drive through, and the people were taking their Starlink with them that next morning, so we just left that with them. And then where else? There was a veterans home, which is kind of neat, north of Black Mountain. We got one there going, so they said that they had been without any communication for a week. And, you know, my neighbor next door went up to an orphanage the next day and, and got one installed there. So it was just kind of neat just to meet a lot, a lot of people that were in need, right?
And for us non-Techies, what does that give them?
I mean, you just get, just like a hotspot. You know, you can't, it's not wired internet, it's off a satellite, so, but yeah, it was a, it was a neat, neat experience.
But don't underplay your role in making it happen, and I thank each of you that contributed to that effort.
Yeah, a lot of people did.
Because it helped, it multiplied. It helped many, many people. So thank you, Chris.
I think I was, I've heard it said, sometimes you can be the conduit of God's grace. So I think you were a great piece of conduit for spearheading that. So great job.
Thanks, man.
Hands and feet. Mr. Wolf?
I think everything I have to say has been regurgitated, but I've got scarecrow crawl and Fall Festival is underway, and it's, as Mr. Garrison says, wonderful to see all the young couples out pushing their strollers around, enjoying our beautiful downtown and eating at our merchants and shopping. So it's election season. That's a right many people died for, to give us that privilege, and is take the time to learn what's on the, on the, about your candidates and vote. Take the time to vote. As everyone said, so much has occurred in the past couple weeks with Hurricanes Elaine and Milton, it's almost hard to digest or summarize. But foremost, I'm grateful. I'm grateful the storm didn't do any more damage to Fort Mill than it did. I'm grateful to our first responders who were available to help those in need. I'm grateful to our public works and utility workers dealt with the cleanup, the flooding, the downed trees, the power outages. I'm grateful for the staff and for the planning and preparedness to make sure all our citizens are safe. I'm heartbroken for all the damage lost of homes and businesses in North Carolina Mountains and, and Florida. My wife has family in both areas who were impacted by each storm. Although they had damage, there wasn't the devastation that a lot of them did. One of her cousins has a business and a home in Lake Lure. His house is there, his business is basically there, but these communities should be in our thoughts and prayers for, for months and even years to take to rebuild. This is not a sprint. That is great that there was a quick response by a lot, but there's, it'll take years for these communities to rebuild. So it's, it's very wide-eyed, because it could have been us. So you mentioned Hugo, and that's what we always think of, and, but it was nothing like, this is biblical. You know, you look at.
It's apocalyptic.
It really is. You look at, you know, there's, Chimney Rock is just not there, and it's all in Lake Lure. It's amazing.
To piggyback on that, I ran into some of my friends from Duke Power that still work in the communications field that I did, and every event at Duke, they assign communications people to go with the technical people and the crews, and they actually are on the ground and do the work. And one of them said yesterday that, and I've heard this from the fire department folks, that the PTSD will outlive all of us, that our linemen trying to get bodies out of the
out of the tops of trees, not, I mean, bodies. They literally, our fire department folks said the same thing, you know, that that will haunt them forever. Um, I do think, I don't know about y'all, but I've, I've had some survivor's guilt. You know, I just feel like it's, it's such a bad thing to live my life and keep going. And all these people that I, I see when I go up to visit our place, they're very prideful people. They don't ask for anything. So I am grateful um, for each of you guys and all of our folks. And I think we're gonna have to be kind and generous um, to those that will have that PTSD moving forward. And Christmas is coming. So I can't imagine. I just, it's gonna be twenty-six in Blowing Rock tomorrow night. So I just, I can't imagine. Um.
And some of them living in tents.
Uh, if they have a tent. They're still asking for tents and sleeping bags. They are. So on a happier note, um, I would like to say thank you to Chris Pettit and to Brian in Public Works. You know, we had a little uh, snafu where we snatched a kid's key ring collection that was leaning up against a tree beside of the trash pickup in Waterside. And how were we not to know? I mean, it was wooden. Some neighbors helped him build it, and he had all these key rings that he and the friends in his neighborhood exchanged. It's a big deal. I don't know why, but it's a big deal. And in a very short period of time, Mr. Pettit managed to help, and our guys rebuilt it. And Mr. Pettit went and bought the key rings to go on it.
That's awesome.
And Brian and I went and delivered it. And what started out on Facebook as a bash the town ended up being somewhat of a love fest.
Wow.
It was so, so sweet. I, I can't begin to tell you how sweet. So in my mind, some of the work we do seems to be hard. You know, we just have to make hard decisions and deal with all the stress. But, you know, I looked at the work that the stormwater people did that changed the direction of Ms. Spratt, Mary.
Mary Fields.
Mary Fields, Spratt, changed her college degree from what she was gonna do to do what our folks do. And then to hear the fire department that's beginning to work, not every kid needs to go to college to, to have a life and be productive. I, I love this, that we have a utilities department that would stop and on their own time build something they didn't know they were doing their job. You know, so I, I can't, it, it's impossible to state the importance, just like the little scarecrows. If it weren't for our scarecrow crawl, the teacher wouldn't have reached out and found a compassionate way to you. Who knew math could be compassionate? Not me. Uh, and these kids are brilliant. They're just brilliant, and they're so humble. I'm just saying, it was just, so thank you for humoring me to let them come before us tonight.
That's good stuff.
But the rest of the community will see that, and they will connect that we too are interested in the future of our community. So thank you for your patience with that tonight. Uh, Lisa has handed me a phone to say the um, um, early voting, yeah, I think it moved. Early voting at the community center there that used to be the old high school gym and up at the Cornerstone Church. So early voting, guys, is the way to go. I'm just telling you.
It starts Monday.
It starts Monday, the eighteenth.
Yep.
Right?
Um.
What are the hours?
Sorry, the twenty-first. Twenty-first.
The fir- twenty-first is Monday.
Okay. Yep.
And what, what are the hours?
Eight-thirty to six.
Are we gonna post that on our website?
Post it on social media.
Yeah, he sent us a message.
I love it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sardelli created a whole.
Push that to the HOAs as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
Monday through Saturday.
Thank you. This is gonna be contentious, guys.
And I highly encourage, if you vote at W. B. Bridge Presbyterian, please early vote.
Yeah.
We are very concerned about that precinct.
Yeah, I can imagine.
No excuses.
It's always crowded, and it's not the best one.
We did Cornerstone last time. Every time I go home at night and go down and walk to Elijah Park, I say, what's all them people doing in the park?
Yeah, I, I have accidentally.
Yeah, I drive.
Scarecrow was a person, so. And I will say this.
Lights turn at four a.m. and seeing the.
I fuss a lot about the litter, but I will tell you, I spent significant time at the park today with my three grandchildren, which are lower to the ground. And I gotta tell you, it wasn't so bad. I'm serious. It, it wasn't so bad. But the park, yesterday we did the scarecrow walk. Today we did baseball, football, and playground. That park is overwhelmed, um, especially with playground equipment. And I'll be pushing hard about that. So um, you know, that, that playground equipment was covered up with people. But they were all sweet today. I loved it. They were just all, I didn't have to fuss hardly at all. So I'll entertain a motion for adjournment, my friends.
Add, add one more thing.
Sure.
Talk about the uh, boy, there's that too.
That's.
But uh, the, the relief effort in, in western North Carolina, there's a website that's been, that's been set up, supporting wnc.com. If you have donations, if you want to volunteer, don't just show up. Try to coordinate that with somebody. They're overwhelmed with donations and water and clothes, and people who want to help, but they're not directed anyway. So supporting wnc.com is a great way to coordinate.
That's so important, because working for the utilities, people with the best of hearts want to bring you food and brownies and pound cake. And these guys are trying to stay focused so they don't get electrocuted, you know? And hey, that's a pet peeve of mine. You either get shocked and live, or you get electrocuted. That means you're dead. Don't ever use the word electrocuted because you got shocked, okay? That is not an appropriate use of that word. Don't do it. But um, I think people have to pull back just a little bit and, and be able to sustain. This is a long race.
Well-turned.
This is not a sprint. So I agree with you. Good job.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to.
All right. I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Have a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you so much.